Seek the good for our community and for all people. In the name of your son, we pray for blessings upon this meeting tonight. Amen.
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Perkins. Item number one, consider approval of minutes of the special called meeting of August 16th, 2012, and the regular August 20th, 2012, meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sims. And a second by Commissioner Herod. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now recess the city commission meeting and call to order the Shawnee Municipal Authority meeting for September 4th, 2012. We have a quorum. Can I have a motion to approve consent agenda item 1A only?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Sims to approve.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will recess the Shawnee Municipal Authority meeting and call to order the Shawnee Airport Authority meeting, September 4th, 2012. We have a quorum. Item number one, consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will recess the Shawnee Airport Authority meeting now and go back to the Shawnee City Commission meeting. Item number two, consider resolution of appreciation to Linda Peterson, mayor, city of Shawnee.
So moved.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Winteringer and a second by Commissioner Smith. Read the resolution, please, or the heading.
This is resolution number 6430. A resolution expressing appreciation for the outstanding service of Linda Peterson as mayor of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing that said resolution be spread upon the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and providing that a copy hereof be presented to said Linda Peterson.
You call roll, please.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
I'm staying.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number three, consider resolution of appreciation to Frank Sims, Commissioner Ward Two, of the city of Shawnee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Winteringer. Read the heading, please.
This is resolution number 6432. A resolution expressing appreciation for the outstanding service of Frank Sims, the city commissioner of Ward Two, of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing that said resolution be spread upon the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and providing that a copy hereof be presented to said Frank Sims.
Thank you. Call roll, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
I'm staying.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number four, consider resolution of appreciation to Billy Collier, Vice Mayor and Commissioner of Ward Four of the city of Shawnee.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Smith. Second. And a second by Commissioner Stevens. Read the heading, please.
This is resolution number 6431. It is a resolution expressing appreciation for the outstanding service of Billy Collier, City Commissioner of Ward Four of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing that said resolution be spread upon the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and providing that a copy hereof be presented to said Billy Collier.
Thank you. Call roll, please. Mina, call roll, yeah.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
I'm staying.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number five, presentation of resolutions of appreciation and plaques to Mayor Linda Peterson, Vice Mayor Billy Collier, and Commissioner Frank Sims.
It's been my privilege to work with you the last four years, and I believe you've done an excellent job to see Shawnee and always had the cities interested heart.
Who's next, number 31, is Billy? Right back at you. A plaque and a resolution, just a little bit for all the hard work that you've put in for almost four years, but on behalf of all the citizens, thank you very much. And Commissioner Sims. Also a plaque and a resolution in appreciation of all of the dedication and the hard work that you have put in for almost four years also.
Thank you.
I guess we're going to recess here, is that the idea?
For the item.
Oh, okay.
Are we going to call? Somebody needs to just call the item.
Let's call item six. Want to make a motion?
You don't even need to have a motion, you just need to go ahead and make forward with the swearing in.
Okay.
Steve, I think if you'll read agenda item number six, that will cover it, sir.
Okay. Swearing in of the Mayor Wes Maynard, Ward Two Commissioner Linda Aggie, Ward Three Commissioner James Herod, and Ward Four Commissioner Keith Hall by the municipal judge, the Honorable Municipal Judge Robert H. Jones, and the presentation of certificates of election.
If the commissioners would come and circle around the podium.
Is that all?
We're going to do these separately, Wes.
We do these separately. Okay, we've got everybody here. You'll raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, and that I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly any money or other valuable thing for the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty pertaining to my office other than the compensation allowed by law. I further swear that I will faithfully discharge my duties as commissioners of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations. Okay, you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, your name.
Wes Maynard.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, and that I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly any money or other valuable thing for the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty pertaining to my office other than the compensation allowed by law. I further swear that I will faithfully discharge my duties as mayor of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
I want you to recess for the reception.
Yes, sir.
Recede for the reception.
Commissioner appoint of a vice mayor. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Do I have a second?
We have a motion on the floor for James Herod as vice mayor, do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Aggie.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Herod.
I'm staying.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number eight, consider approval of agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Herod, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Winteringer, call roll, please.
Herod.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Number nine, consider approval of consent agenda.
So we approve consent agenda.
We have a motion by Commissioner Harry, Vice Mayor, Harry, to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I do want to encourage everybody on this group, from time to time, we need discussion, okay? So if you have any thoughts on your mind or things during this, please open up and communicate, let's talk to the people, okay? So call roll, please.
Herod.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 10, citizens' participation. I'll say this to you, just like I've just said to them, please, if you have something you want to say to us, and please feel free, limit your time to three minutes, and tell us who you are, sir.
I'm Arnold Davis. I just wanted to congratulate the winners again, and I wish you the best luck.
Any other citizen participation? Well, now I get to do something fun, get to give an award. Item number 11 is mayor's presentation of Oklahoma Certified Emergency Manager credentials to Raymond J. Butch Latomsky, is that right, Latomsky?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Certified Emergency Manager. I know you did a lot of work to get there. You know, handing you a plaque sometimes, it's not really worthy of the effort that you put into things. And this is a great thing for our city, and I want you to know that it says, "The Oklahoma Emergency Management Association has reviewed the requirements for certification as an employee emergency manager and attest that the following individual has met those requirements and hereby decrees that Raymond J. Latomsky shall be known by these presents as an Oklahoma Certified Emergency Manager effective this 22nd day of August 2012." Would you say something about this, gentlemen, please? I'd love to.
Just briefly, Mayor, I'll tell you that I've been here right at 12 years. Butch was the first person in my office when I came on board here. He's been a volunteer with our organization for between 15 and 20 years, and he's dedicated a lot of time and effort, his own expense, to help benefit our program in the city of Shawnee. He took a lot of his time and travel around the state to meet the training requirements, as well as the education, the experience, the planning, and the exercise requirements that are in this, and it is something that very few people in the state of Oklahoma actually achieve, and we're very proud that he's able to do that, represents our community well.
Would you like to say something?
He said more than enough.
Well, again, thank you for being a volunteer in our, at the city of Shawnee.
Finish out the other two agendas.
And Jim gives me a nickel.
That's him.
You don't have to, but.
But I guess, I think what I've just been told, I'm trying to learn the rules of this procedure, and it is that, we, any new business, did you say, or go?
After 15 commissioner comments, before we go to executive sessions, if you could recess and go to the Shawnee Municipal Authority and do its business, that lets the people who are here because they're interested in bids and awarded bids and so forth go, and I think the airport authority doesn't really have anything. But you might as well do it, fellow sisters. And then when you come back, you can, you can just finish your executive session, and I know some people.
Who's in charge here?
Well, this is. I took responsibility for this, we met with him today, and I forgot to tell him that we normally do that, just so that the public and the staff can go ahead and not have to wait until y'all get back.
Great. Okay, item number 12, consider setting the official trick-or-treat night for Halloween. And I, you know, could I have an administrative report on this, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Chief France?
Good evening. As far as the date, we usually do it on October 31st unless it falls on a Sunday night, at which point we usually move it to Saturday night. I actually started getting calls on this back in June, and so did the city manager's assistant. So we've been telling people at this point it'd be on October 31st. Actually, that works out well from my standpoint, because that's a, that's a fully staffed day, and I also have multiple supervisors on that day, so. Totally up to, to the council here.
Any questions?
Do you not have a full staff on Saturday night?
I do.
The reason I say that is, this is a very highly church-going community, and Wednesday night, a lot of services have fall festivals in lieu of, and being the grandparent that's raising two grandchildren, I would appreciate not a school night being involved on trick-or-treat night, too.
Well, this, this being agenda item, it's, it's falls squarely back on the commission.
I would like to make the recommendation that we have it on the 27th of the month, which is a Saturday night, and, and move it away from a school night and move it away from a church night.
So my only comment on that is, we've been telling people already it'd be October 31st, so would you like to do it on the Saturday before the Saturday after?
Saturday before.
Now, is that in conflict with Boo on Bell, or?
Yes, it is.
Is that an issue?
It's Boo on Bell.
I don't want to do anything that attracts, I mean, from the Boo on Bell event. I say that, that does, uh.
I agree with Steve, it should be Saturday. I think that's a good idea, have it on Saturday night, not Wednesday night, church and school and all that, that's my thought.
I guess my question is, how do we handle Boo on Bell?
They can go to that, too. They can go down to Bell Street and get handy also.
What time is your deal, Theresa?
Well, it starts early Monday and goes into about 9:00.
Night.
How about Friday? I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there, but Saturday's fine.
Shawnee have a home football game Friday night, John?
I don't have a discussion. Does anybody in here know if Shawnee has a football game on Friday night? Tough issues, folks. Please, everybody. Right off the bat. Right off the bat. Well, do we have a, any more discussion? Let's keep going. Do you have a thought on?
I can do, I can do either, either night.
You can trick-or-treat either night?
Yeah.
Well, I have a comment. Why, I mean, why don't we compromise, not have it on a church night, but have it on a school night, like on the Tuesday before, the 30th, instead of the 31st?
Is it done by 9:00?
I'm sorry.
It's done by 9:00.
Well, little kids need to be in bed. They, anywhere from third grade down, at least have to have 10 to 12 hours sleep, if I learned that much. And if you go out and get a sack full of candy, and if you let them eat one or two pieces, it's overworked.
We've friends of, what's done in the past.
Like I said, typically, it would, it would normally fall on the, on the 31st. We've had it, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday in the past, and when it falls on a Sunday, we typically move it off, off Sunday, usually move from Sunday to Saturday. So.
So more often than not, it is on a weeknight or a school night?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes, sir.
Any comments on, any thoughts on this?
Mr. Mayor, mine will be operational, and from a standpoint of having a full staff and supervisors on duty, that means less overtime, so my recommendation would be Wednesday
Have the churches complain?
Not to me, but I.
In the past, I think we've had it on occasion, on a Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday night.
I think more often than not, the calls to my office have pretty much just been, when is it?
If you moved it to Tuesday, the 30th, I think that may be a Shawnee leadership night.
It's tough to fit things in.
I move we have it on Wednesday nights, October 31st.
I second that.
A motion and a, a motion by Vice Mayor Herod and Linda Aggie, a second, we can continue some discussion, if we feel like we need to. Not, call roll, please.
Herod.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief France. New business? Do we have any new business?
Mr. Chairman, no new business this evening.
Okay, no new business. Item number 14, administrative reports.
Yes, sir, we have one this evening. Don's going to come talk to us about storm shelters, storm sheltering.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Don Lynch, Emergency Management Director. Just wanted to give you a quick update, Commissioner Aggie had requested we bring you up to speed with where we are in the process of looking at alternate facilities for use as public tornado shelters in the city of Shawnee. We've been working with a couple of people, I have identified one location here near City Hall that will be available, have talked to that landowner about the use of that facility, and we'll be working in agreement, we've identified, gone through the facility, looked at approvals that need to be made, they'll be doing some, we'll be proposing to do some on that, to make it usable and effective for putting people in a tornado shelter environment, and so we'll be bringing back a memorandum of agreement on that facility as quickly as we can get that drafted and approved by the legal councils of both parties that are involved. We've also identified a couple of locations to the north, we still have to work with those building owners to do some inspection of that area, make sure that those are suitable shelters, and do the same process with them, but we're bringing that back as well with an agreement for those when it happens. As you may or may not recall, some legislation was passed during the last legislative session, which provides for immunity for any private citizen or company, organization, private firm, that offers their facilities for use as public tornado shelters. Public facilities, the government facilities, will be receiving that immunity effective November 1st, so we'll still be continuing with our work in that process and be bringing that back to you. Our intent is to continue to operate the facilities that we have now, as we have been. Most likely we'll do that, unless there's some compelling reason not to, and you have some direction for us, otherwise, we'll continue to operate those next season and allow us to transition to the new facilities, to let everybody know that that will be taking place. So we will be coming back forward with those agreements as we get those developed, so. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do you have a timeline? I mean, have, have we, can we set a date? What do you think, Jay?
My, my goal is to have, depending on workload with, with the other things, if we can work everything out, we should have the, the agreement for the one facility to you, the second meeting in October, and then I would hope we would have the others to you the first meeting in November. So that's what we're, that's what we're shooting for in the time. So, that's what we're, that's what we're shooting for in the timeline.
Questions, guys?
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to reiterate that we will continue the sheltering that we have in the community until times such that we can find additional facilities that will work for us.
Okay, now, is there any modification, say, to the fire station over in, on MacArthur to make that more usable, I guess, or something?
You know, we've really only got one toilet in that facility.
Oh, yeah.
So, adding a toilet's about $10,000. And the stairs are in there. It is not ADA accessible. So, it's a great location, but we'd have to spend some dollars to get it up to, up to speed.
If we don't find something in that area, it might be that we need to take a look at that. I don't know what's available out there, but yeah. I know that we were using Sequoia School, weren't we?
We've got some pretty good leads. Let us continue to follow those down.
Thanks.
For the sake of our visitors here today, and we're glad to see all of you, and we hope that you continue to come and show interest in our community, uh, we're going to go and switch to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. Agenda, adjourn this meeting and-
Recede.
Huh?
Recede.
Recede this meeting and recon, and convene the Shawnee Municipal Authority. And then we can cover these points and then we will probably go into executive session here in a little bit. And for the sake of you folks, you don't have to sit around in case you just really want to, so.
Supposed to have no on that.
Don't want to. Do I need a motion to?
No.
Okay, okay, let's, uh-
One B. Going to one B.
All right, let's call to order the Shawnee Municipal Authority, right? And we already have a quorum, so I don't think we need to do that. We just move to one B. Authorize staff to solicit bids for a THM analyzer to be used in the lab at the water plant. Is that legal, THM?
At a point, can we do all three of them at the same time?
You can do B, C, and D as, as one item because they're part of the consent agenda, yes, you can.
Yeah, I'll read all three of them. Authorize staff to solicit, solicit bids for replacement of screw pump number three at the Northside Wastewater Treatment Plant and approve agreement between Potawatomi County Development Authority and Shawnee Municipal Authority to provide immediate and emergency personnel for the maintenance and operation of its water system. Do I have a, a motion?
I may, we approve it.
Do I have a, do I have a, Vice Mayor, Harrod, do I have a second?
Second.
A second for Mr. Smith. Discussion. Call a roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Winneringer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item number two, consider bids on Midland Waterline replacement.
Okay, we opened the bids on the Midland Waterline project. The first bid was Matthews Trenching Company Incorporated of Oklahoma City, $907,870. Now I got your attention. Uh, second was Orion Construction Service Corporation of Oklahoma City for $749,026.12. Third one was Holland Backhoe Hera, $634,758. Craft Rentals Construction Company of Oklahoma City, $582,626. Jordan Contractors Incorporated, Tecumseh, $495,871. Southwest Water Works of Oklahoma City, $573,000. And I would request to defer to the next meeting so we can review the bids.
A, a quick question for the people that are here that may not know. Could you just kind of give us a very short paragraph what the Midland Waterline replacement is to the people here?
That's, uh, Midland between Kickapoo and Airport Drive. And then it's, uh, some of the side streets, Dorothy, there's four or five side streets from Midland to Franklin. And that's where we've had a enormous amount of main breaks. And it's just deteriorated and so we need to-
What size is that, Jim? What size of line is that?
The Midland will go back with a 12-inch and then the side streets will be six.
This is kind of off the beaten path here, but I had another friend of mine call me about her sewer being backed up last Friday night. She's had three of those in the last, I'm going to say, eight months. Thank God she had a trip to Vegas to leave this mess. But is there a particular problem? They, she finally got ahold of them late Friday night and they said there was a, some kind of a blockage or something in the line. But this has happened three or four times to this poor girl.
Yeah, if we got the address, we can run the camera through it, see what's going on. If we need to, we can put it on the pipe burst list or-
I don't know what it is offhand, but I can get that to you. Is that an area that we're having trouble with or?
No, that's all over the place.
Is it?
I mean, it's just hit and miss. Some areas are more than others. But yeah, if we have the address, we can run the camera through it and see what's going on.
Okay, I'll, I'll call you back. Thank you.
Since we have a request to table this until the next meeting, I'll entertain a motion to-
So, may I?
Second. Okay, motion and a second. Call a roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Winneringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Water Treatment Plant Sledge Removal.
Staff recommends ordering the Water Plant Sledge Pond Cleaning Project to terror renewal from Richardson, Texas in the amount of $126,960.16. Budget amount was $200,000.
Budget amount was what?
$200,000.
Is this a, a process that, how often does this occur? I mean, do you need to have this done or?
Yeah, usually about every, we've got two ponds.
Yes.
And it usually, one every four years. Depending on, that's a estimate, depending on how much water we treat and how stirred up it is. It's the, it's the residual that comes off the filters that we backwash into the pond and the sledge settles and the water runs off. So, usually every four years.
What happens to the sledge when they remove it?
They land, usually they land-apply it. There's several, four different. You can take it to a landfill. You can use it in stabilization projects like roads or something. And you can land-apply it. And usually it's land-applied in a farmer's field. That's what we've done the last time.
How much was the award for? I missed that, sorry.
How much was the bid for or the award?
Any more questions, anybody? Pam, you, Linda? Uh, we need to approve this. I'll entertain a motion to approve this bid and-
Motion to approve.
First by Mr. Winneringer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. Call a roll, please.
Winneringer?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number C, removal and replacement of the enclosed fishing dock and walkways on Shawnee Twin Lakes. Number one.
Uh, staff recommends to award to Recon Services Incorporated for the removal and replacement of the enclosed fishing dock and walkways on Shawnee Lake. Number one, in the amount of $177,482. Funding for this comes from the, the insurance check that we got for the damage on it and the remaining is budgeted in SMA budget at a total of $180,000.
How much was our insurance check?
$52,689.30.
What's the time, on the timeframe, on that time?
Um, I believe that, that timeframe was, uh, I didn't, I didn't write it down in here, but it, it's somewhere around 20 days once they get started on it, I believe.
Have you ever been to their office in McAllister?
No, I haven't.
Their office floats on a dock. Got a pond all around. Office floats on a dock all the time.
Well, these, these docks are, are built by the same company that built the boat docks that we just had installed. This company just, just puts them together.
Can you tell us a little bit about the dock? Is it, it's covered and enclosed? Does it have like a donut hole in the middle like the one that's there now or?
Uh, yeah, it, it's going to be, it's just a little bit bigger than the one we have now. Uh, it has seven-foot walkways all the way around the outside of it with a seven-foot walkway inside around a square hole that has railing. This one is, is built to, to handicap accessibility with all the handrails and tow boards. And it is totally covered on the top. It has windows in it, a couple of doors.
Is it the same amount of walkway, the same length of walkway?
Yeah, it was estimated at about 120 feet is what we measured, so about 120 feet of walkway. We were going to try to put heaters in it, but the way the costs come back, that's what the alternate bid was for. And it would have put us over budget to put the heaters. But the wiring going out to, to the dock into the service panel will handle heaters if we decide at one time to go and put them in.
Okay, it has lights in it or?
Yes, it has lights outside and inside.
Questions, anybody else here? Okay, no question. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'm in motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch?
Second.
AG and a second by Mr. Winneringer. Call a roll, please.
AG?
Aye.
Winneringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Motion carries.
New business.
No new business this evening, sir.
No new business. Administrative reports.
No administrative reports.
He's getting off light tonight, isn't he? So, I guess I need a motion to adjourn this. Do I?
Yes, you do.
Oh, it's my second. Okay. Do I need to call a roll? I call a roll.
Yes, sir.
You need to call the roll.
Call a roll, okay.
Okay, who made the first? Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Who made?
Vice Mayor and Mr. Winneringer, second.
Steve, actually.
Oh, Steve, I'm sorry.
Ready for me call?
Call a roll.
Harrod?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Winneringer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carried. So, we will move from that to the Shawnee Airport Authority agenda. And, uh-
Start with new business.
Yep, new business. Any new business with the airport? Rex?
Mr. Chairman, no new business this evening.
No new business, huh? I just want to make a comment about the airport. This afternoon, I, I was not able to get out there, but I received a phone call. Piper, I believe it was, brought down some high-dollar new aircraft that they were showing off to the community. And it was for people that are interested in aviation. If you didn't get out to see it, it was a real good thing that I heard. I heard from them. And our little airport's getting, to me, that is quite an honor for our airport to have something like that by Piper, a major aircraft manufacturer, to bring those four airplanes. And that's not cheap to bring them down here and display them and let the people of Shawnee see and other people that came from the surrounding area to see them. So, people aware of, of what's going on out there. Any new business?
No, sir.
Administrative reports?
No administrative reports.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then the Airport Authority. So, may I? Second. Mr. Smith, first, and Mr. Winneringer, a second. Call a roll, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Winneringer?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We'll move back to the agenda that we were working with before we moved to the authority. I'm looking here. I think the next one is item number 15, Commissioners' comments. Pam, have any comments if you'd like to share with us? Huh? Linda?
I've always got comments. I don't want to break the bow here. I would like to say to the Parks Department, James, that the Boy Scout Park, the new basketball goals and the basketball floor, concrete, and the tennis courts really look great. I'm not a, uh, what do you call it, a?
Ball player? Tennis tennis player?
But, what is it, John?
Tennis player.
No, the-
Frisbee?
Frisbee golf. I'm not into Frisbee golf, but I'm, I have seen some people, surprisingly. I have seen some people out there, so that's the, one other thing I just wanted to ask about, I don't know whether that's in James's category or, about the Al James Building. What's the status of it? Oh, I just, I thought that was-
Justin? Happy to update you on that, Mr. Vice Mayor. The Al James Building, the, um, the certified asbestos removal was completed last week. And so, they're just mobilizing their equipment and to finish the demolition of that structure hopefully within the next 10 days or so.
I don't know why this, this commission would like to see that re-examined or not, but it's probably too late to do that, isn't it? Contracts been let and all that kind of-
I think that's the issue, is we have a contract that's already been let with the demolition contractor. So, you know, there would probably be damages of a certain type or other.
Sure there would be.
Mr. Hall?
No comments at this time.
Mr. Winnering?
I've played tennis on the new courts at Boy Scout. They're very nice. And we also got Woodland Park repaired on the tennis courts. And then Frisbee golf at Woodland Park is very nice. Is Boy Scout done, is Boy Scout Park done yet on the Frisbee golf?
No, they, they should be laying out and installing or beginning to install this week.
And people are using them like crazy.
I don't know. They're like crazy, God.
I love that. There's a bunch of people lining up out there. They are.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I would just like to take the time to welcome the new commissioners and our new mayor to this circle. And it's an honor to serve with you and I want you to feel welcome up here and be very open and supportive. And maybe we can get something doing.
I did want to make a comment about the Frisbee golf. Tonight, I told my wife, coming here is the first time I've been by the park and have not seen people playing Frisbee golf. And you know, when you stop and think about it, in the area that it's in, and I, someone told me the other day, and I haven't been to Dollar General to see, which is, they said you can buy a Frisbee for a dollar, a dollar. And what a great thing you can do to have activity with your children or whatever it is. And I want to commend the staff for putting that in. And it's, you know, in Oklahoma City, it's a major deal. You have to get a tee-off time out in northwest Oklahoma City. And they carry a bag and they have a big Frisbee that goes a long distance. One they can throw around trees and all that. It's a, a huge deal. But just in our little park here, it's a great little addition that we have put there. And I want to thank everybody that was involved in that. Okay?
Take a bow, John.
Don, is that you or?
I thought he was the one that was barking.
Okay, any more comments? Okay, item number 16 is consider an executive session to discuss potential claims, litigation, or other options regarding encro, encroachment into the city's utility service area by other entities as authorized by 25.0.0 is. Okay, do I need to read all of them?
Just, do we need to take one at a time, Mary?
Let's, let's go ahead and, and go into executive session for both and, and we'll start with one and-
Okay.
And then change out personnel and the other, and then you guys just come back once.
Okay.
Okay.
So, may I?
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Winneringer, a second. Okay, thank you. And if you don't want to stay and wait for-
Then take a vote.
Oh, got that.
Take a vote.
That's right, sorry. Call a roll.
We'll get it. Harrod?
I will.
Aye.
Winneringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yeah, I need to read 17 also. Consider an executive session for discussion and possible action on any litigation tending against the city of Shawnee by the Shawnee Area Chamber of Commerce as authorized by 25.0.s on the recommendation of council that public discussion would impair the ability of the city attorney to adequately defend the city. of the city attorney to adequately defend the city. Do I hear a motion on that?
So, I may.
Second. Second by Mr. Hall and Winteringer. Call or roll, please.
Second by
Mr. Hall or Wintering?
Take your choice.
Which is the shortest to write. His name's the shortest.
Herod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Agie.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
19 also right.
No.
We'll do that one again.
Okay, so.
Thank you, Gavin. Thank you, Gavin. And let's do six.